Welcome coming up to the podium.
Father, I believe that each person here tonight is hereby your appointment. Therefore, I'm asking you to pour out wisdom and grace upon each person here. That the conversations and discussions would be led by your spirit and lead to fruitful ideas and planning. Things that would cause each one to hear your heart as they consider each project placed before them. I ask that you would give them insight to lead Paducah into a great future. That we could come together for the greater good of our community. Father, tonight, as this meeting of the chamber comes to order, we ask for your blessing over the decisions made here this evening. These things we ask in the name of your precious son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City manager, any additions or deletions?
No ma'am.
Thank you. I do have a proclamation tonight. We did find it. Pat. I have a proclamation tonight, Pat, from the office of the mayor. To all to whom these presents shall come, whereas the women of the United States of America have been treated as second-class citizens and have not been entitled to the full rights and privileges, public or private, legal or institutional, which are available to male citizens of the United States; and whereas the women of the United States of America have been united to assure that these rights and privileges are available to all citizens equally regardless of gender; and whereas the members of the Paducah business and professional women have worked to further equality for all since our BPW was first established in Paducah in 1920; and whereas the President of the United States of America has designated August 26th, the anniversary date of the passage of the 19th Amendment, as a symbol of continued struggle for equal rights; and whereas the women of the United States of America are to be commended and supported in their organizations and activities. Now therefore, I, Gail Kayler, Mayor of Paducah, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim Monday, August 26th, 2013, Women's Equality Day throughout Paducah and encourage all our citizens to recognize women for the significant impact that they have made and continue to make. In witness where I have earned to, sent my hand to cause the seal of the city to be affixed this 8th day of Aug-- this 26th day of August 2013. Would you like to say something?
No, but I do. I'm not much untalked, but I do really-- our club really appreciates this and especially from someone who is such a great role model.
Oh, well, thank you.
And I hope other women follow in your footsteps.
And we have two other women on the commission too as well. The first time I think we've ever had three women on the commission.
That is great.
And you all do great work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all right. Commissioner Abraham, if you'll do the minutes, please.
I move that the reading of the minutes for July 30th and August 6th, 2013, city commission meetings be waived and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second. Everyone looked at the minutes? Okay. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler? Aye. We'll go on to appointments. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Jonathan Mark Davis as a member of the Paducah Area Transit System, which term will expire June 30th, 2017.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in reappointing Jonathan Mark Davis as a member of the Paducah Area Transit System.
Second.
All right. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Motions. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay. I move the following documents be received and filed. Documents: Commissioner's deed, 1724 North 12th Street, 614 Husband Street, 902 South 5th Street, 1245 Park Avenue, 2820 Bradley Street, 1126 Park Avenue. Contracts and agreements: Construction overage agreement between City of Paducah, McCracken County-- County McCracken County, G E P D C Incorporated and TeleTech Services Corporation for construction of a customer care center building and associated parking lot located at the Paducah Commerce Park. B. Management Agreement between City of Paducah and Paducah-Mcracken County Joint Sewer Agency, JSA, for information technology services. C. Contract for services with Luther F. Carson Four River Center for fiscal year 2013 and 2014. Contract for services with Paducah Tillman High School Tornado League Football for fiscal year 2013, 2014. Number three, notice of cancellation for Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. Regular meeting scheduled 5:30 PM Tuesday, July 16th, 2013. Regular meeting scheduled for 5:30 PM Tuesday, June 18th, 2013. And regular meeting scheduled for 5:30 PM Tuesday, August 20th, 2013. Number four, deed between City of Paducah and Todd Tees and Deborah Tees for Sheen Bridge Road property, tract 1. Deed between City of Paducah and Karen Jackson for Sheen Bridge Road property, tract 2.
Second. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, please.
Upon the recommendation of the city manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah order that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Hi Cindy.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. I have before you personnel actions. I don't have any to particularly highlight for this evening.
Thank you. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled-- a municipal order accepting the donation of a military high mobile multipurpose wheeled vehicle, commonly known as a Humvee, and a mine-resistant ambush-protected vehicle from the Defense Logistics Agency Law Enforcement Support Office to be utilized by the Paducah Police Department.
Second. Hi Stacy. How are you?
Good evening. Well, any questions? We have about a $400,000 armored vehicle that we have been graciously donated to us through DRMO, the demilitarization program for the military. Also a Humvee as well.
Stacy, I think one of the biggest questions collectively that might be out there would be what the condition is of these two vehicles at this time so that it might ease any concerns about expenditures to get them functional or to give them some capability that they don't have at present. Can you address that?
Yeah. Captain Roberts has done most of the work, so I don't want to steal his thunder, but both vehicles are 2008 models. The armored vehicle has, I believe, 4,800 miles on it and the Humvee has approximately 5,000 miles on it. We got the pick of the litter down in Fort Campbell. I believe there were 11 of them and we got the pick of the litter. So they looked them over really well before we took possession of them. We see no mechanical flaws. I believe the armored vehicle is taken over to fleet today for an inspection as well.
And where may you use these vehicles?
We would use them. Hopefully, we'll never have to use them, but in the unlikely event that we have maybe an officer rescue or a civilian that's in harm's way that's been hit and we have no way to get to them, we would obviously take this armored vehicle to rescue those personnel.
I noticed Captain Roberts in your packet. You highlighted what they used in the Boston bombing, the similarities between the two, and I guess they're very beneficial when you need them.
Absolutely.
You might want to speak to that just a little bit so the public can know what we use both of them for.
That was one of the most recent incidents was the Boston bombing and the search for the suspect. I did include that information and as well as the commercially manufactured vehicles that Boston uses is the Linco Bearcat. The cost for one of those, depending on what model and features, would be $200,000 to $300,000. We're getting a vehicle with a greater value at no cost to the city. And if you need an armored vehicle to put between a bad guy that's shooting and a rescue, there's just nothing else that's going to work. Currently, the best that our SWAT team has is a handheld shield and that provides this much cover. This, we can provide cover for a team, for medics. We can evacuate and it's-- there's just no substitute if you need it. I look at this like a fire extinguisher. You train on fire extinguishers, you're prepared to use them, you hope you never have a fire. It's the same thing with this armored vehicle, but we're very pleased that it's available to our teams if we need it.
Would we allow it to be used? Would you take it out in the region if another community needed it? Has that been addressed?
We would if we've got a MOU with them and they requested our assistance to save a life, we would use it, yes.
Currently, the closest armored capability is Kentucky State Police and they would have to-- they were about four hours away in a Bearcat to come here. That's a long time when someone's shooting at you.
Do you anticipate forming a regional unit in lieu of MOUs with other jurisdictions?
Well, we have an agreement with the Marshall County and the McCracken County SWAT teams now, but we're about the only SWAT teams in western Kentucky until you get to Owensboro and Bowling Green.
And what about maintenance on these vehicles? Do you know much about maintenance requirements?
To answer, no, not a lot. We know that they're in good shape currently. Both vehicles were driven back, one from Frankfort, one from Fort Campbell. We have been reaching out to the military for their guidance and expertise on this. We're also looking at the commercially available options as well as the capabilities of the garage. At this point, we don't know. We're not anticipating having issues for a while because they are in such great shape. It's extremely low mileage on them and we're well-maintained. We have the military records of their maintenance.
We do have personnel on staff that have driven these vehicles before and will train us-- or train the team to properly drive those vehicles.
Okay. All right. Thank you Assistant Chief. Nice addition to the community. And Captain. Yes, city clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled-- a municipal order approving the sale of real property located at 511 North 5th Street, tract A, in the amount of $1,500 to Henry C. and Niva F. Rudy and authorizing the mayor to execute a deed for same be adopted.
Second.
Hi Steve.
Good evening. This is the first of three property transfers. This first one is for a new 2,500 square foot home to be built on this property and the adjacent property. We're excited about these transfers and if you have any questions also, we have the representative here, Duane Nursery, representing Mr. Rudy.
I know they plan to build a lovely home.
Yes, yeah.
So it'll be a great addition.
Everyone's done a nice job. After approval, if you grant approval, we'll also be going to the Historical and Architecture Review Commission to make sure that that design is compatible with the neighborhood.
You have a pretty good feeling about it though?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
And these are properties that the city reacquired from the Main Street Association sometime in the last year and a half, five years.
So we'll have several new construction projects in the neighborhood soon?
Yeah, with approvals tonight and with the final reading, there'll be three houses being constructed, three very nice houses in Lower Town.
We'll be down to what, one? We'll have only one vacant property?
That's correct.
So be able to get the oars and water and act quickly.
It'll go pretty quickly with it being the last one, I would assume.
Exciting.
Sure. Because those properties have been vacant, I mean, from the get-go of the Arch District.
We've had them for quite a many years, yes.
Steve, approximately how long ago did you learn of interest in this tract on someone's part? And describe the process that led up to the interest and the eventual offer to purchase?
Actually, that was existing property owners or existing owners within the community that came into office, showed interest in the property at that time, and I started looking at their plans and what they were planning to do, went through the public notice process to see if there's any other individuals within the community that would also show some interest. After that process was over, we only received one bid for each of those properties. After receiving those, then of course, we came to the same decision.
Do you recall when the initial inquiry came your way?
Probably within the last three months.
I know, I think the Rudy's had talked to you maybe and then they-- I know I met with them in the office and directed them to your office and that was not too long ago.
No, it's happening quickly.
Mm-hmm. That's good. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled-- a municipal order approving the sale of real property located at 511 North 5th Street, tract B, in the amount of $4 to Gary Jackson and authorizing the mayor to execute a deed for the same be adopted.
Second.
Gary Jackson is here with his design representative Chad Byer. They're planning on doing the same thing, building a brand-new single-family infill construction on the remaining portion of 511 North 5th Street. That will be combined with the next agenda item, which is 511, for once again, new construction.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Good. All right. Commissioner-- I mean, city clerk, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled-- a municipal order approving the sale of real property located at 517 North 5th Street in the amount of $4 to Gary Jackson and authorizing the mayor to execute a deed for same be adopted.
Second.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. We'll go on to ordinances adoption. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled-- an ordinance authorizing the finance director to pay Kentucky League of Cities for workers' compensation, liability insurance, and property insurance coverage for the City of Paducah. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the City of Paducah hereby authorizes the finance director to pay Kentucky League of Cities in the total amount of $941,284 for workers' compensation, liability insurance, property insurance coverage for the City of Paducah for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2014.
Second. Okay. We discussed this last week. Any other discussion? City clerk, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled-- an ordinance approving the recommendation of the Urban Renewal and Community Development Agency to accept the bid of gem steel construction for construction of a new home at 1322 Madison Street and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the City of Paducah approves the recommendation of the Urban Renewal and Community Development Agency to accept the bid of gem steel construction in the amount of $135,200 for the construction of a new home at 1322 Madison Street as part of the 2012 Home Project and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
Okay, it's another lovely home in Fountain Avenue. All right, city clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled-- an ordinance of the City of Paducah accepting an agreement-- excuse me, an amendment to the grant award for an extension of the time with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency for the 2012 Homeland Security Grant Award. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the City of Paducah approves an amendment to Article 3 of the grant agreement with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security Federal Management Agency to extend the period of performance from June 30th, 2013, to March 30th, 2014, for the 2012 Fire Prevention and Safety Award Grant.
Second.
Lot of dates.
Okay. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled-- an ordinance approving change order number one with mat construction and excavating ink for the Riverfront Development Project Phase 1A piles and mass fill and authorizing the mayor to execute said change order number one. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby approves change order number one with mat construction and excavating ink to increase the contract amount by $16,800 to allow for the demolition of the executive end concrete slab for use as mass fill and to decrease the contract amount by $16,800, deducting 1,400 tons of stone fill at $12. Therefore, an increase is not necessary to the total project cost of $4,490,600. Further, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute said change order number one.
Second.
Okay, so we're using some rock we have. Any discussion? City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Gault, please. No, Commissioner Abraham, I'm sorry.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled-- an ordinance authorizing the purchase of solid waste dumpsters during fiscal year 2013 and 2014 to be utilized by the Solid Waste Division of Engineering Public Works. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the finance director is authorized to pay Municipal Equipment Incorporated an amount not to exceed $70,000 for the purchase of solid waste dumpsters during fiscal year 2013 and 2014 for the City of Paducah Engineering Public Works Department, Solid Waste Division, in compliance with the Kentucky State Purchasing Contract.
Second. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled-- an ordinance accepting the bid of Ohio Machinery Company, DBA, Ohio Cat, for sale to the City of a Trommel Portable Screening Plant used by the Solid Waste Division Public Works Department's compost facility and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the City of Paducah accepts the bid of Ohio Machinery Company doing business as Ohio Cat in the amount of $172,850 for the sale to the City of a Trommel Portable Screening Plant for use by the Solid Waste Division Public Works Department compost facility and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Okay, we'll go on to our contract for services and these are all things that we plan for each budget cycle in the investment fund, so Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled-- an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Paducah Area Transit System for public transportation services. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Paducah Area Transit System in the amount of $215,000 to be paid quarterly allocations of $53,750 for public services, transportation services for the Paducah-Mcracken County area. This contract expires June 30th, 2014.
Second. Any discussion? City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled-- an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Barclay Regional Airport for providing general aviation and air carrier services. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Barclay Regional Airport in the amount of $136,430 payable in quarterly installments of $34,107.50 each for providing general aviation and air carrier services to the citizens of McCracken County and surrounding region. This contract shall expire June 30th, 2014.
Seconded.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled-- an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Paducah Junior College, Inc., for the Paducah School of Art. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Paducah Junior College, Inc., in the amount of $75,000 to be paid in equal quarterly allocations of $18,750 for the Paducah School of Art. This contract shall expire June 30th, 2014.
Second.
Mayor, is this the-- is this the third year for this?
I believe so.
Three-year obligation, okay.
And we're getting a beautiful new building?
Yes. And they will teach well, then?
They will. And still have-- they still have more development to do in the neighborhood too with the big building. City clerk, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled-- an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Paducah Junior College, Inc., for the Community Scholarship Program. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Paducah Junior College, Inc., in the amount of $125,000 for the Community Scholarship Program. This contract shall expire June 30th, 2014.
Second.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay. I move that the rules for conducting city commission meetings be suspended insofar as they are in conflict with the printed agenda for this meeting. Otherwise, the rules are to remain in full force and effect.
Second.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topic: Proposed or Pending Litigation as Permitted by KRS 61.8101C.
Need a second, please.
Oh, second, I'm sorry.
All right. Call the room, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
All right.
Okay.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move that we pull the ordinance introduction, Item 9A, to change the change order for the Riverfront Development, please.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
No. Okay. So we have Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay, I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Approving the Recommendation of the Planning Committee," sorry, "of the Paducah Planning Department to Accept the Bid of Gym Steel Construction for Construction of a New Home at 717 Harrison Street, and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract for Same. This ordinance is summarized as follows: That the City of Paducah accepts the bid of gym steel construction in the Amount of $182,965 for the Construction of a New Home at 717 Harrison Street, and also authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same."
Second. Hi, Steve.
Hello, this project, we've obviously been working on for some time. As stated in the agenda request, we do have in hand the escrow agreement and the purchase agreement with the applicant. We plan on constructing the home. Upon completion of the home, the home would be sold back to the applicant to recoup the costs, plus any incurred interest.
Okay, this, these are just introductions, so.
Yes.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
We don't vote on these. Commissioner?
I have it.
Yep.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Approving Change Order Number Three with Bluegrass Uniforms, Inc., for Uniforms for the Fire Department Employees, and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute Said Change Order. This ordinance is summarized as follows: That the City of Paducah hereby approves and accepts Change Order Number Three with Bluegrass Uniforms, Inc., to Add Items That Were Not Originally Incorporated Into the Original Contract, Such As Replacement Items, Small Pieces of Equipment Available to the Individual Employee, and Uniform Items That Were Inadvertently Left Off the Original List."
Second.
Steve?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. It, that pretty much sums it up in summary there. It's been a work in progress. This is the first ever contract we've had for uniforms previously. We didn't have a contract, so we added and took away things as the year went along, and that's proved to be a learning experience for me and for the guys as we've gone along there. This doesn't increase overall contract price or the amount of the clothing allowance that they have available to them, it just increases the number of items that they have available.
It does not increase the overall amount.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with the Greater Paducah Economic Development Council for Specific Services. This ordinance is summarized as follows: That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Greater Paducah Economic Development Council in the Amount of $250,000 to be paid in equal quarterly allocations of $62,500 for Performance Services as outlined in said contract. Further, this contract will include services for Antifa Paducah in the Amount of $50,000 to be paid equally quarterly allocations of $12,500. This contract shall expire June 30, 2014."
Second. Okay, Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a 2013-2014 Kentucky Transportation Discretionary Award for Reimbursement Grant with the Kentucky Office of Highway Safety, a Division of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. This ordinance is summarized as follows: That the City of Paducah hereby authorizes the mayor to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto for a 2013-2014 Kentucky Transportation Discretionary Reimbursement Grant Award for the Kentucky Office of Highway Safety, a Division of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, in the Amount of $5,000 for overtime hours for traffic enforcement. This program does not require any local cash or in-kind match."
Second.
Good evening again. We were approached by the Transportation Cabinet to, one of four agencies in the Commonwealth to apply for this grant. It's a no-textingwhile-driving pilot program in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Once the program's over, hopefully they'll publish the results and take some of the recommendations from these four municipalities to possibly change the texting while-driving law, so.
Okay, thanks. All right, City Managers' Report?
Briefly, next Tuesday is a workshop item. We are going to take up the matter of the community feedback we had on the recycling questions in our recent survey. As you recall, we had a customized question that you all formulated, and there were a couple of the stock questions that were associated with that topic, so, working with Pam, we're going to have a workshop on that and take a look at the data from the survey and do some interpretation with you all, see if there are any conclusions we might want to As it's well-known, our local drop point recycling and processing facility is in need of a new home. Those folks are interested in visiting with you all as well, so I think it only makes sense that we hear from them in conjunction with this workshop, hear what their thoughts are, and at least begin to get some idea from you all what direction you might want to take on this issue, be it continuing to support a drop point center such as what we had, albeit perhaps in a new location, perhaps involving an expanded role for the city, and/or something beyond that, all the way up to, you know, potentially a curbside collection program. So again, I think it's best to address that issue from the full range, because I believe our questions covered a full range of potential city involvement in that. So we look forward to that and look forward to your participation in that as well.
What about the other issues that were identified the day of our workshop that we were going to focus on? There were three different groups. I mean, I'm very much in favor of the recycling topic for next week, but there were three others that we were going to look into that, to my knowledge, we haven't approached yet.
The customized questions or the?
No, the three things that came out that we were going to focus on from the workshop. Where do we stand on that?
Each one of us were assigned a group to have a focus group, essentially.
Right.
The members of those groups will be contacted this week with, in fact, I think we've got three, and while we're trying to keep them somewhat on the same calendar, I